I call the September ninth, two thousand twenty-five Colonial School Board of Education meeting to order. Please join Mia Castaneda Ocampo in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first official act as a board member. We want to welcome Mia to the board as well. She's our student representative for the next two years. All right, now moving on, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I have a correction to agenda item eight A. I have an addition of a word. It should be eight A, the motion that we are seeking is the intent to terminate employee number twenty-six dash oh-two. That's in the recommended action, so then in the public comment content area, I'm going to be asking to change that also to the intent to terminate. It is not a strict termination, it is the intent to terminate. That's the only correction that I have for the board agenda.
Thank you very much, Dr. Menzer. All right, now moving on, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as corrected.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
As moved by Mr. Law, seconded by Mr. Handy. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, all those in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The agenda with the correction is approved. All right, now is the time in the board meeting for a celebration of the E in the power of we. We're going to begin with our student board member, Mia Castaneda Ocampo. Did I say that wrong?
Nope, you said it right.
I did. Sorry, I bet PTSD was a little due. To provide us with her report for the start of the school year.
All right, on the academic side at Penn, we have officially begun the first, the school year and without the first marking period. I think at this point, we are well past the ice breakers and into our schoolwork. We have had a few hiccups here and there with scheduling and classes, but thanks to our amazing faculty and staff, we've been able to get past them. I think the biggest change we've had this year was our change to Infinite Campus, which I will say for students and parents at least, it was a very easy system to use. Everything is very accessible and the website is easy to go through to be able to find any and all information that we need to get to. On the athletic side at Penn, fall sports has officially begun. One of the biggest news that I've heard this year is the new girls' flag football team. I've heard a couple of classmates talking about it and I can tell it's going to be a good team. You'll probably see me at several games this year, this season, sharing my classmates on, especially girls volleyball. I wish all fall athletes much luck this season. Go Penn. Lastly, the social side, I know I'm not speaking for everyone when I say it's so good to be back. As a senior, it's me and my class's job to be obnoxious about everything we're doing for the last time. As a matter of fact, this past Saturday, we had our senior sunrise and it was, it was nice to see a lot of the senior class outside having fun together. Not sure how much more is planned out, but I can tell it's going to be an exciting year and I'm looking forward to one of the last years with all my peers.
Thank you, Mia. Let's not spoiler and clap every time.
All right, thank you very much, Mia. To continue with our E in the power of we storytelling, I'm going to turn the mic over to Colonial's Public Information Officer, Ms. Lauren Wilson. Ms. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we begin with a full circle moment. The first group of students who were enrolled in Colonial's Spanish immersion program as youngsters are now starting the tenth grade. They've come a long way and it's shown in their AP exam scores. Some did so well, they are now qualified to continue with dual enrollment courses for high school students at the University of Delaware if they choose to take them. Let us recognize and congratulate the following accomplished Spanish speakers. Israel Bell, and you'll come forward. Israel Bell, Quinella, Paige Burridge, Madison Gray, Jayden Rosita, Aleah Neal, and Mason Swanson. Miguel Lopez.
Come on up here for a picture now.
Yep.
Where's my guy? Right here, right in the center.
Everybody center up for me.
They might not be able to understand us in English.
All right, three, two, one.
Congratulations to all of them.
Ms. Wilson, if I may, this is a, actually, while it seems like just a piece of paper and a recognition up here, this is a monumental moment that started back, I don't, what year did you all start the Spanish immersion program? Kindergarten, right? That is what's beyond impressive about this group. So when you hear Spanish immersion, it didn't just start last year in ninth grade when they came to William Penn, they've been doing this since kindergarten. That's why we see smiles and joy over there. No, that's awesome, but that, I think it needs to be put in context. That is truly a huge, huge accomplishment. Kudos to you young folks for that. Awesome.
And I just wanted to follow up with that, that I just want to make sure I'm understanding that you, you took your AP courses, your AP test in ninth grade?
Yes.
And so now you're going into tenth grade at least, or eleventh. But some of you as tenth graders have the opportunity to start to begin earning college credits, is that correct?
Yep.
That's fantastic. Yeah, just for perspective, when, when we were in high school, you didn't take AP exams until your senior year, so that's a hearty congratulations.
And now moving on to our outstanding staff. Our transportation department is an integral part of the day-to-day success of our students, and the office team is like a key to the ignition of a bus. They embody the power of we when they are called upon to wear many hats to ensure that our students are routed safely and correctly to school, even if that means pitching in by getting behind the wheel. The Colonial family is very proud to have them as a valued part of the district's team and wants to recognize them for their hard work. Would all the members of the team, if they're present, to come forward, please, at this time?
That is true, we did really think that.
They get up very early.
Lauren, still read off the names of these individuals.
We have Mark Emmerich, Miles Camacho, Grace Coliberra, Kevin Gethardt, Aturo Harris, Newman Hell, Gail Novak, Elaine Sandelier, and Jennifer Zarco.
As Mr. Gethardt pointed out, most of these folks are up at like three-thirty in the morning, so we probably should have rethought this strategy in the evening. But what's really more important is every year they do this, in and out to make sure our students' buses are on time and things flow, but as Mia pointed out, the infinite campus thing is great on the front side for parents and students, not so great on the backside for transportation. That was, if I use the word nightmare, I think it's not strong enough for those folks to route buses using that system in the transportation system that they have. To get it where they got it by day two was a Herculean feat that they, they were working all summer on. So they, if you ever get a chance to talk to anybody who works in that office, they did an amazing job, I mean, hands down. So that's why we felt really important that we got them in front of the community to know how valuable they are in a part of the team. Most of you will never see them because they're on an office, they're on a dispatch, they're punching things into a computer, they're driving the buses when the driver's out, and they made it happen. So we really felt strongly about recognition. So I wanted to make sure that was said, even though they're not here. Hopefully Kevin will go back and say we said really nice things about them.
I promise.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was stated.
And that concludes our recognitions.
I do have one other last minute one, and I hate to hog the white, but we just got word today, and this is almost like an annual occurrence, and it'll be more news when we don't actually win it. William Penn won the sportsmanship award for the twenty-fourth year in a row at the state level, and that's something that just, that also. I just know that we are the only one that's ever won in twenty-four years in a row. So you know, while Mia and Kate, there was a bit of a rocky start in places and times, but those are the kinds of moments where, you know, staff and students collectively step up to do the right thing, represent Colonial positively on the athletic field, in the community, and in the hallways. You know, those are the kinds of moments you want to go viral and everybody to see and hear about. So I would just say, remember that those things are happening on a regular basis, not just in William Penn, but at schools across the country. And so that's just one that we're really proud of here at Colonial, twenty-four years in a row. I feel, I hate to be the athletic director and principal when they drop that ball. That's a tough one, I can tell you right now. It's a high bar and there's a lot of sweat and pressure that goes into that one, so kudos to them, first for that.
Jeff, is that run through DIAA?
DIAA.
And it's just one winner per state or county?
There's multiple winners, year in and year out, sometimes there's five, six, half dozen, one. It all depends on who submits applications and who passes the application and the process. So we're super proud of William Penn, yet again demonstrating how to do, do it the right way, even though it's difficult and sometimes not always the most popular.
So now is the time in the board meeting for board members and the executive secretary to discuss items of information and topics from our participation in various professional organizations. Specific updates and documents are listed in the agenda. Are there any concerns, questions, or points of interest board members would like to discuss? First, we'll go through the committees and the updates that we have from them. We'll start with the Colonial School Board DSBA. That is Mr. Handy.
How's everybody? We met on the third, the highlight of the meeting is, was the conversations that we had with Delaware Secretary of Education, Ms. Cindy Martin. She's very, very excited about coming here to Delaware. She actually came from California and served in a very large district and made a lot of innovative moves to improve test scores, and she wants to bring all that stuff here to Delaware. She also wants to make it a priority that she comes through and talks to all the school boards throughout the state to get a better perspective of what's going on. And the one thing I would say about her, she is very passionate about her job and I believe personally that she's going to do well here in Delaware.
Thank you. And for the legislative committee, we haven't had a meeting, is that correct?
That's correct. No meeting yet.
All right, and then for the executive committee, that was, that was his, I'm sorry, CSOA of the Chief School Officers Association.
Yeah, we met last week, discussed a variety of issues, infinite campus being one that was prominent front and center, as well as some of our budget priorities and legislative conversation for the coming cycle. And we too had the time to interact with Secretary Martin and also the Delaware Academy for School Leadership. We received some professionals developing around AI and its future implications in public education. So we'll, we'll keep you updated on that as time goes on, the AI conversation.
Thank you. And as far as for district committees, for the Strategic Planning Committee, I know Ms. Smith has something.
Yes, there was a virtual meeting, I think last week, with some members of the district administrative team and some folks from the University of Delaware who are interested in crunching and analyzing and gathering various types of data that would help inform what priorities we should be setting for the strategic plan. It was a very interesting meeting.
And I figure since we're discussing the other committees, what's the name of our committee group? Construction?
Major Construction Board.
Say, say another.
Major Construction Review.
Major Construction Review Committee. I'm a board representative on that along with Ted Lawls. We met last week in Zoom and discussed the new updates that we have going on, planning with William Penn for the football stadium, new designs, and then it was gunning pepper or southern?
Southern.
Gunning pepper with that one. So more updates, but that one drew updates to the board as well at the board meetings every two or three months on that one. Every third month? Okay. Do we have anything else, Dr. Menzer?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not, not physically here in the space, nor just for the, for the record and for the community at large, you know, we did have a virtual public comment offered this time, starting this month, so we did not receive any comments both in person or virtually.
All right, usually at this time, I'll invite everyone who have family, kids, and all that, where they can actually leave, but they kind of already scooted out. But I do advise you too, we have a very interesting, we have a vacancy for our board coming up here, and we're going to be doing interviewing with the two candidates that have filed for it at the end of this meeting. So if you do want to stick around and see, you know, a live civics lesson going on, feel free to hang out, it's very interesting. Other than that, we'll give a second for anybody else who feels they need a chance to scoot out before we go through the rest of this. Give them a moment. Yeah, apparently they all left. All right, so the next agenda item is the consent agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda have gone through board review, including documentation concerning these items that have been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items in the consent agenda generally include routine personnel and business office actions and updates, as well as approval of previous meeting minutes and education-related items such as choice and student placement. With that being said, do I hear a motion from the board?
I move that we approve all consent agenda items as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, as moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Breeding, are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, all those in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, next up on the agenda is updates and action items. I'll pass it over to Dr. Menzer.
Our first action item is we're seeking the board's approval of the intent to terminate employee number twenty-six dash one-oh-two.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve, I move that we approve the intent to terminate employee twenty-six dash one-oh-two as recommended by administration.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Give the time, Mr. Handy there. As moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Handy, are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, all those in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next up, we are excited to present the board with the final construction drawings for Leach. We need the board's approval to send these down to DOE so we can, we're inching closer to groundbreaking her, to bidding, so we can get out to bidding and move forward with this approval. So at this time, we ask the board's approval.
I move, I move that we approve the new Leach School final construction drawing as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, as moved by Ms. Smith, seconded by Dr. Dorsey, are there any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's get the building leached.
Next up, we are fortunate, as you know, every couple of months, we have different curriculum areas present and interact with the board. In the October, or in November, it's reading, and then we have reading again in April, and then we have math, and then we do math twice, and then in May, we have social studies. We're going to designate September is our science month, and so that said, Dr. Nick Baker, our supervisor in the area of science, is here to kind of share with the board some things going on in the world of science at Colonial, so turn it over to you, Nick.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. PQ, thank you for the civics reference before, appreciate that. But tonight, I am wearing my science hat. So good evening, President PQ and esteemed members of our Colonial Board and the Colonial community. It is my pleasure tonight to be joined by our K-12 scientist instructional coach, Ms. Kimberly Movenna, and Mr. Tahira Rogers, science teacher and department chair at McCullough Middle School. And we are going to showcase for you our middle school science program. When many of us think back to our middle school science class, we remember a very familiar routine. Open the textbook, copy down the vocabulary, memorize the steps of photosynthesis or the water cycle, maybe like me, remember painstakingly trying to remember the periodic table of elements, which is why I became a social studies teacher, by the way. So regardless of the class, our experiences were the same. We were often told the answers first, and it was our job to recall them on a quiz or some sort of a test. And science always felt like a subject where everything was already figured out. But now I want you to walk into a Colonial science classroom today, and you're going to notice a very different picture, and you're going to capture a glimpse of that this evening. Instead of beginning with a definition, teachers start with a phenomenon of some sort, something puzzling that the students are seeing in the real world. And as a class, they might watch a video of a bridge swaying in the wind, or they may look at satellite images of hurricanes, or investigate why some materials conduct heat faster than others. Students are not told the answers right away, they figure them out by asking questions, testing ideas, analyzing data, and building models. Tonight, Ms. Movenna and Ms. Rogers will walk you through how science instruction has been transformed in Colonial School District through the implementation of the Open SciEd program. Let's get ready to tonight to do the work of scientists here. Kim?
Thank you so much, Nick Baker. My name is Kim Movenna, and I'm the science instructional coach for Colonial School District, and I'm extremely proud to be here. As our first time presenting to the board, I hope you all get to see a glimpse of some of the work that we've been doing in Colonial School District over a very long period of time. So we have a group of lead science teachers from every building across Colonial School District who have worked on creating a science vision for Colonial. So what I'd like you to do is each of you should, in your folders, have a copy that is colored copy of our science vision. What I'd like you to do is to independently read that science vision, and I want you to think about what is happening in the science classroom. What does a science classroom sound like? What does it look like? What does it feel like? And I want you to choose three words that stand out to you, or three phrases that stand out to you for what we want our science classroom to look like, to sound like, and to feel like. All right, so now what I'd like you to do is to turn to a shoulder partner, so let me sit next to you, and I want you to share one of those, one of those words or phrases, and why you chose that word or phrase, an important part of what we want our science classroom to look like, sound like, and feel like. I thank you for reading our science. I appreciate you all engaging in this exercise with us. Is there someone who wants to share out one of the words that kind of stood out to you, or a phrase that stood out to you?
Analyze.
Analyze. Anybody else?
Ignite curiosity.
Curiosity, one of our most important things. Excellent, excellent. So we have someone with us tonight, very important teacher, an amazing science teacher in one of our middle school classrooms at the Colonial School, Tye Rogers. She is going to ignite your curiosity. She is going to engage you in a phenomenon, you're going to be so excited, you're going to get to actually do this with us. So Tye, let's all welcome Tye to do this with us.
So I'm going to need you all to break up into three groups of three and one group of two, and you all are going to come over here. No, not today.
Do I have to do it, Kim?
Yes.
See, now I have a surly student, right?
PQ, you're up over there, it says. Oh, you and I are up.
If I take this cup, flip it upside down, put this here index card underneath and let it go, what's going to happen to the index card? It's like if I just let it go.
It's going to get wet.
Oh, okay, that's not supposed to happen. It's going to just fall off, right? There's something sticky on it. But how about if I take this cup with some water in it, place this over top of it, secure it, hopefully this works well. Flip it upside down, what do you think is going to happen to the index card?
It's going to get wet and it's going to leak.
Please work. So I want you to turn and talk with your partner, and I want you to think of two notice others.
We're not supposed to do anything yet. We're looking in here, we're getting a little ahead of anything, we're just talking about it, right? It's got to be pressure.
I like his kind of student. Can I have two share outs for two notices? No, please don't notice. Two share outs. So I need, what did you notice with what you saw?
The card didn't fall.
The card didn't fall, and how about?
Notice as well?
Yes.
Okay. It was pretty fast. There wasn't supposed to be leaking, but.
There was a little bit of leaking, but it wasn't supposed to be. So how about a few wonders? Do we have any wonders?
Well, you would think because of the weight of the water, it would have pushed the card off.
So we're wondering, we're wondering why, right? So what you all have in front of you is a few items in your bucket. I want you to take a look at those items in your bucket. I want you to test out what we just did. Try, try it out, see if it works for you. And then I want you to look at the other items in the bucket and see how we could further investigate this phenomenon to see if we can figure it out. Yes, ask questions, look at it, touch it. Just don't put your nose directly to the water. That is definitely not going to do it. You can try anything in that bucket, whatever you want.
That's a good wonder.
That's a good wonder.
Can we try it?
You did better than me.
Wow, you did that really well.
I would love to see what it looks like with the soap. Can you try it with the soap?
Yep.
Okay.
I want to go with the soap. No, I feel like.
Okay, go ahead, Jeffrey.
Ready?
Not yet.
It's not doing it.
Oh my god.
Cardboard.
Nope.
So we are going to turn our attention back. We're going to turn our attention back to the teacher in ten, nine, eight, turn your attention back to me, six, put your materials down.
You're going to have to use a ladder.
Five, four, three, two, and one. So everyone looks so excited. I need about three, because it seems like, I heard a lot of interesting comments, a lot of interesting notices, and I actually heard some questions. So what I would like is for about two people to share out what they, what they saw. When they tested out these items in the bucket, what did you, what did you really observe? What did you notice? And what are, what did you find really interesting?
Well, I noticed that, that we had a little bit more trouble with the soap, and we had some leakage, but ultimately it did stick on the, on the index card.
Okay.
Yeah, after it all settled.
The laminated thing is slick.
Did it work?
It didn't work.
Oh my god, that worked for us. That worked for us. That's the only one that worked.
So in science, what would you do?
There's something wrong with that. What was that, Michelle?
Yes. You would do it again. So that's something that you would test multiple times to see if it would work. Now, I understand that we did this in a short amount of time, but students would generally have thirty to forty-five minutes in the classroom to do this, and they would be able to come up with different questions, and it would drive our investigation further. So in Open SciEd, we wouldn't be presented with something like this, because it wouldn't take us that long to figure it out. But our phenomena would take us anywhere from, what, four, well, six to ten weeks to actually figure out the answer to a question. And students through each lesson are able to drive the investigation further. They come up with the experiments so that they figure out the answer to the question by the end of that six to ten weeks. So. Can you imagine this in a classroom of twenty-five to thirty?
Frankly, that's impressive.
So what is something that you found enjoyable with open science?
Trying differently, rather than just, you know, fixed, like opening up a textbook and just copying things down, writing definitions.
It was hands-on.
And the hands-on.
So that's what we hear every day. Students enjoy the hands-on. They enjoy not having to open up the textbook and take the notes and listen to me in the front of the classroom, just following the instructions. That's what they would hear about science. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I was going to say, if the stopwatches were in there because we were going to compete against something, I think we all want to get back up. We have a very competitive year. Yeah, this left me with more questions than answers.
Why did that, why?
Yeah, why?
No why. Six to eight weeks, we'll come back.
Going to Google it.
Yeah. All right. So that phenomenon, which was, what's amazing about it is that it can span from a kindergarten classroom all the way up through the high school classroom, depending on the standards you want to figure, the teacher wants to figure. So in your folders, we also gave you a copy of Colonial Model of Instruction. So if you want to, it is a model instruction, and Ty actually demonstrated for you guys the first two steps of the model of instruction. This model of instruction, we created in Colonial to make sense of our curriculum, and so that teachers would know and that students would know what is happening in every step of the way as we're figuring out the phenomenon. So as you're looking at that model of instruction, this is something we're very proud of, that we brought on in Colonial and that we created. Kind of makes sense of how science looks K-12.
So you really saw a snapshot tonight of how, you know, scientists do their work and grapple and critique each other, as Holly and Jeff were doing in that. And teachers, you saw in Tahira's example, was assuming the role of a facilitator, not the, what you hear the term, the sage on the stage with all the science information possible. You know, and so now, you know, we really, this is our students doing the work of a scientist, making sense of a phenomenon, learning the content through the process and through the discovery across that entire unit. And our curriculum really harnesses that curiosity that the students have, and really helps them explain why things are happening in the world, not just what's written in the book. And it gives them a message and it empowers them through discourse, through agency as well, to really share what they're learning and think through and become problems. So that's our, a little, little bit of a snapshot into our program. If any of you ever want to see our units in action, our teachers are happily getting started with these right now. As, as we were bouncing around McCullough today, we saw them rich in their first units as well. So happy to show any of you around to see this program in action. And we've actually been really proud to host some districts from Pennsylvania specifically because of the implementation of this. They're a little more behind in Pennsylvania on implementing the next generation science standards, and they've actually been visiting us and spending time in our classes because of really the work we began with this program starting during COVID era and really engaging it at that time. So thank you for enjoying our opportunity today.
Do we have any questions from the board, or Dr. Baker, or anyone else, starting with Ron? Questions or comments?
Oh, no, I'm just enjoying that because I really, when I was in school, I really enjoyed science because I liked making a mess.
Speaking of making a mess, Ms. Phillips, do you have any questions?
I still want to know why that works.
Kim, do you want to give a snapshot?
Should I give him the answer?
Give him the answer.
Let him leave with his curiosity. It's a burn.
Go find, we can get the board out.
Yes, I agree.
We can do that. The social studies in me wants to give you the answer on that, but I, I will, you know, let Kim take the lead, so.
I'll just ask my son, who graduated from here and knows everything about science.
Yeah, seriously, he should know the answer to that.
Can I more give you a kudos for the fact you have board members now who want to go home and immediately Google something? That's exactly the point you wanted to get across.
Exactly what we want the students to do.
Christine, do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, probably, I'm probably dating myself. Are you still using what were considered the Smithsonian kits?
Good question. No. Because of the dating. Uh, there. No. In elementary, we use Amplify Science specifically, which is aligned to this, this concept that you see here with the phenomenon-based instruction. And now we use the Open SciEd kits as well. So the Smithsonian ones needed to be, they really weren't presented in the way that the, the new standards came, really requested it to or showed them.
They weren't aligned with.
They were not at all at the time. And so this was right around 2016 that we started the change.
And are they still warehoused in Dover and they get shipped up and down the state?
They do, yes.
Refurbished and, okay.
They do, yes.
Ted?
Good.
Dr. Dorsey?
No questions, but that was, that was awesome. And I always like students having hands-on experiential learning, because even as a student myself, that's the way I learn. You can tell me what you want to tell me, but let me do it.
Mia?
No questions, and I second everything Dr. Dorsey said.
I just think it's really great because it does, I mean, it really got our curiosity going, and it would certainly get a young mind's curiosity going to make them want to learn more.
Ms. Movenna, this is something, by the way, I want to start harping on every, every month as we notice it, because I've talked with Mr. Phillips about this a lot. Where did you go to school and graduate from?
Oh my gosh, Wharton. Wharton. Yeah. Class of ninety-three.
Oh, you asked, I wasn't willing to ask it. Very good. I, I love it because I, I talked to Gabe about it, and I truly think we're an outlier in the group of how many homegrown talent we have in this district, and it truly is a community love that we have. And then the power of we is a real thing. So just thank you for coming back and working for us after you, you know, went through schooling here. So we appreciate everything, all of you guys.
Thank you. I wouldn't work anywhere else, just so you know.
Well, thank you guys very much for the presentation.
Thanks very much.
Come back soon. All right. Moving on to the social studies portion that Dr. Baker did not know, that he was also going to be in a presentation. We have an open board seat, and is this something you'd like to announce or discuss, or are we doing really a good plan? Anything you can say about Jeff's.
No, I think that the board approved the process last month. The process was shared publicly. The process was shared with candidates. We received, the district received two candidates to interview. We have Carlos DePries and Tanya Kearns.
Tanya Kearns.
Tanya Kearns, I'm sorry. And the board approved an interview, an open interview, and then following the interview, a nomination process for the appointment. I will just point out that the appointment is for the term up until the next board election in May, where the candidate will have to run again to finish out an abbreviated term that I'm not sure that they're even, but it's not a full, it's not a full term, I believe. I think there's like only three years left on the term at this point. The path forward was for you and Mr. PQ to begin facilitate the interview by calling on board members to ask a question. Okay, I believe you're going to be leading it off. You'll pick a first person to respond. They'll have a two-minute window to respond, and then the second candidate will respond to the same question. Then the next question, the candidate who went second will go first, and then the candidate who went first went second, and we'll alternate going first and second throughout the question process. So everybody, so it's a kind of even shape in terms of who gets the time to think or who gets the first answer. Some people like to go first, some people like to go second, but this way it's an even balance throughout the process. Yes, we're going to ask that Mr. Phillips give them a microphone so that they can answer their questions. And we'll, we'll pass a microphone along here.
Probably take Dr. Menzur's, bro.
Yeah, mine, because I'm not going to be part of the interview.
Thank you.
And so at this point, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. PQ, to facilitate the interview, the question of the candidate. We want to let them maybe introduce themselves just by their names since they're here. I mean, I did call them out. It's kind of obvious since there's not a lot of people here, and we know Kim Barbado. We know her, so I think it's pretty straightforward, but why don't they just, we give them a quick second to introduce themselves.
I don't know, I figured it's more, more comfortable conver, this is more of a conversation, I think. It's the board's prerogative, but I felt like them sitting here. Yeah, he's going to.
Yeah, whatever's best for you, really.
Do we have two mics? One for each of them?
I can.
So as he's getting the microphones, I figure we'll just start in alphabetical order. We'll start with Carlos answering the first question first, and then Carlos, that means, and Tanya, you'll answer the second question first. And we'll just go back and forth like that.
You can stay in your seat. We're just going to be casual.
Feel free, go ahead and introduce yourself first, a little bio.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Carlos DePries. And for the first question, briefly describe your understanding.
Actually, Carlos, before that, instead of answering the first question, we want you to give a little bit of a bio about yourself.
We're going to, we're going to ask you questions that you don't have in front of you.
Ah, okay.
So if you just want to say a little, Kate, can you check the mic? The speaker sounds like feedback, something. Just a one-minute, like who you are, why you're here, and, and, you know, what you do kind of thing, and then that's it, just a quick bio.
Right. Again, my name is, my full name is Carlos Andres DePries Ramirez. And I was born in the Dominican Republic, and I have twenty-eight, twenty-eight years of living here in Delaware. This is, being a board member, or being choose to be a board member is a great honor for me, or to be here in the interview is a great honor for me. And I'm willing to dedicate my time and my energy to make sure that the kids at the Colonial School District get the best quality education that they deserve. You want to know my day job?
Yes.
Sure.
As a day job, I'm the senior community relation for WM. And I've been doing that job for the last four years. And before that, most of my experience has been working for a nonprofit for probably around twenty years. And most of that has been being a community advocate.
Thank you, Carlos.
Sure.
Ms. Tanya, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Kearns, and I am, is it working?
We can hear you.
We can hear you. There you go.
No, this is good. I'm good. My name is Tanya Kearns, and I am a parent in the district. I have two graduates from Wharton. I also have a bonus daughter who is in middle school. I am a native Delawarean, so I've lived in Delaware all my life. I grew up actually downstate. I went to Ubert High School, the smallest school in the state. And then I transitioned up here when I went to college. I have been volunteering in the Colonial School District for about thirty. I have been volunteering in the Colonial School District for about thirty years, pretty close to that. Prior to that, I worked at several nonprofits. My first job out of college was actually in preschool at Head Start. And then from that point on, I've just been involved in education, either working in that area or being on the Board of Directors, Policy Council at Head Start. So I've been very active, I would say, my whole entire career. My day job, before I retired, was an accountant. But even when I was an accountant, one of the things that I did was I mentored college students so that they came and worked for me and learned their accounting background and accounting career. So I've been involved with community service and working with the district schools and students for several years now.
Thank you. All right. So first question, I'll give the first question out. Again, you guys have two minutes to respond. I'll give you a thirty-second warning when you've got thirty seconds left. Carlos, you're the first one to answer. What experiences and abilities do you have that would make you a good board member for the community?
My experience is based on being, I have been member of many co-ops of education for Kestrel School and community organization right here in the, in the nineteen seventy six code. I can bring a community organizer, a community outreach experience, and more than that, a parent involvement engagement, which is, I did when I was for about ten years, I was the state PTA Hispanic rep. So I work with organizing that community or the community in general to make sure that they get the best that they can get from the public education.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Kearns, same question, I'll repeat it just to make sure you heard it. What experiences and abilities do you have that would make you a good board member?
Okay, I guess I could say my first experience is that I have been board members on nonprofits. I am currently a board member on a nonprofit. In addition to that, I've worked with board members in some of my positions. I was in the position of preparing the board packets and answering questions, financial reports, so I've done both sides of being a board member. In addition to that, I have a very good relationship with a lot of the students and staff because I volunteered a lot. So I think with my collaborative and being able to speak to them and represent the community, staff, and students, that that would benefit me as far as being on the board and help provide additional resources to have our students excel.
Thank you. All right. Next question will be asked by Ms. Christine Smith.
And I'll be directing this to Tanya, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
First answer, yeah.
Tanya, what do you see as the major issues facing Colonial District? And how do you believe you can assist in addressing those issues? It's a two-part question.
Okay. The major issues I see, I actually have two that I think are the most, the major. One is discipline within the schools, and the other is test scores. As far as discipline, I think that a big part of how we can solve some of that, not all of it, but some of it, is that we need to enforce the student code of conduct. I think that piece of it alone would help with some of the discipline, not all of it. And then, I mean, there's other things we could do, but I think that's a big piece of it. And going around in the schools, having students in the schools, I've seen things where we're not enforcing the student code of conduct, and I believe that leads to additional unwanted behavior from the students. And then the other thing is the test scores, and I think we have to work with the students hands-on. I like the hands-on approach, I think that's a very good approach. The one thing I think we probably should give more attention to is repeatedly doing assignments and learning things. I know last times we don't do homework, but for most students, most children, most people, they learn by repetition and doing. So I think the more they're involved, the more they do, I believe that will help bring up those test scores.
Thank you. Carlos, I'll repeat the question. What do you see as the major issues facing Colonial School District, and how do you believe you can assist in addressing those issues?
One of the first measures, one of the first issue that I see is that Colonial School District is losing a lot of students. For example, I know one district have three hundred and thirty-three students that belong to Colonial School District. That's over a million-plus dollars that went out the window. We need to create a tax force to work with those students while they are still at school, while they are exiting. The parents, meet with the parents. Why do you want to take your school? Why you want to take your scura, your students, out of the district? That's one big issue. Another issue, and it's something in general, is that all the school districts are losing funds. And we need to work together, the community and the school, to keep pushing our elected officials to don't take those funds out of the school, because the time that we are leaving is very dangerous, and we need to work together to don't lose those funds because that endanger one of the rights that the people have in this country, that's their right to the public education. How can I help with that? I will go out and do advocacy for the school district. I would go to Dover, which I already have done many times, and speak in front of the legislature, and talk to the local businesses to approach the school district and see how they can help there.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. Next question will be asked by Ms. Philip Reading.
Okay. What strengths do you see in the Colonial School District, and how would you work as a board member to build upon these strengths? And that's Carlos.
Carlos.
The strength that I see is, I was looking into the Sona data, it says that this Colonial School District is number six in teachers, saying that they are feel great working here. We can work on that, strengthening their relation with the teachers, providing with opportunity to the teachers to be more, to get more education. For example, we have science here today. Some of those teachers, they could apply to be in the Presidential Award in Science program. They can go to participate to be National Board certificate. Those strengths is with motivation to the teachers. Motivation is the number one thing. Today, we can achieve whatever we want. And that's one of the strengths that I see in Colonial. So it's the number sixteen out of the Philadelphia area in diversity and parent engagement. We should, we should help, I should, I will help to that. Not the sixteen, because I always believe the second place or third place, they don't get a trophy, to be the number one, or be on the top three. Thank you.
And Tanya, do you want me to read it again?
Sure.
Okay. What's, sorry. What strengths do you see in the Colonial School District, and how would you work as a board member to build upon those strengths?
One of the biggest strengths I see is the staff. I think it's wonderful that the staff are so engaged, and a lot of the staff are alumni of the district. I believe that has a huge impact on how the staff present themselves to the students as well as to the community. So I think that is a very, very good strength for the district. In addition, I also think we have a really good curriculum. I like the hands-on, a lot of the students like the hands-on. There are tweaks that we can make to help students understand a little more, but I really think we do have a very strong curriculum when you compare it to other districts, either in Delaware or in other states. But I do, like I said before, I think the students should be more engaged, not just at school, so homework, additional work, things like that, that will help them just, not just learn, but retain what they're learning. And that's the key, being able to retain it so that when these tests come up, that they don't have a problem remembering what they've done because they've done it so many times that it's easy for them. So those are my two.
Thank you very much. Next question will be asked by Mr. Ron Handy.
All right. Stay right there with you. How can a board of education best communicate with its constituent group?
With the constituent group?
Yes.
There's several ways to communicate with the constituents. Attending events within the school districts, attending PTA meetings, parent meetings, athletic events, and even attending events in the community. I think there's a lot of different ways board members can associate and work with the constituents within the district.
Need me to repeat that, sir?
Excuse me?
How can a board, how can a board of education best communicate with its constituent group?
The best way to communicate with the constituents is participating in the community or activity of the community. And more importantly, district G probably have around ten to twenty civic association or homeowner association. Those where you need to be, because those are the parents that care about the community in, if they care about the community, they will care about the kids to graduate from high, from the school. And that's a good way to communicate. Another way, and that's something that I would bring to the table, is that I will be able to communicate with the twenty-two point three percent of Hispanic, they are in the Colonial School District, and which is, at this moment, being a board member, that would be a great addition to the board.
Thank you. All right. Next question will be asked by Ms. Mia.
Here we go.
I got it.
Mr. DePries, how would you engage the community to solicit feedback to improve the Colonial School District?
Getting feedback from the community is, you will get it being where they are, not they are coming to you, you go to them. And again, civic association meeting, homeowner association, public engagement from the district, from the school, that will be the best way to engage with the community. Like I say, this position is a public position. You cannot expect that everybody come to you because you came to them to ask them for his vote, so now I will go to them to ask them for their feedback to make things better, not only for the whole district.
Ms. Kearns, how would you engage the community to solicit feedback to improve the Colonial School District?
There's a couple of ways. A lot of people now use social media, so one of the things to do is definitely send out a blast on social media, asking parents and community members for their input, holding any event so that they can, everyone can come together and discuss and talk about the issues that we're looking to get answered. And then the third is to definitely attend different meetings within the community. I'm a member of the civic association in our development, and most developments have civic associations or some type of association. They don't all meet, but they do all have associations, and the county usually has a contact person, if you look on the parcel, parcel information for each home, there is contact information for that civic association. So I would look to speak to them and try and pull people together to have a meeting, whether it's virtual or in-person.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lawls, you have the next question.
Okay, so Ms. Kearns, you're going to be first on this one. Are there any other organization or boards that you're associated with that would be in conflict, assumed conflict, with your position on the board for Colonial?
I don't think so. Currently, I am a board member for the Wilmington Children's Course, which is more music, it's somewhat educational related in that we provide services in some of the community centers, but I don't think it's a conflict of interest. And then the other areas that I'm involved with on the civic association, I am the treasurer of the civic association, and then on the finance committee here at Colonial School District.
Will you repeat?
Sure. I'd like to hear your voice.
You want a few. Are there any other organization or boards that are you associated with that would be in conflict or be construed as being in conflict with your position on the school board for Colonial?
Well, I belong to the Rude Night CDC, just up the street here, and a board member. Also, I read aloud Delaware, and a board member. And I believe, and also for Aspira Charter School, which is, if it is a conflict, I will resign of my position to stay here with the Colonial School District.
And there are other boards?
Delaware Community Benefit Agreement, those are more, nothing to do with the school district, with the school, and I think that is all the boards that I belong as.
Just checking.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, just for clarification purposes, there is no legal conflict with anybody being on any other board member's charter, whether it's a charter school or not. I did know that that question has come up before. I'm sorry, there's no mic in front of me, but yeah, so that's not a, not a conflict of interest.
Okay. And next and final question will be asked by Dr. Dorsey.
All right, so I get to wrap it up. You can relax.
All right, so I get to wrap it up, you can relax after this. So I'm starting with Mr. DePries. How are you connected to your community, your district? And also, as you both kind of answered, how are you part of a civic, are you part of a civic association or any other community organizations that I've ever been with?
Yes, I'm part of various community organizations that I meet with them, not necessarily as a board member. Most of them are in the nineteen seventy-two city code, which is the city code where the Colonial School District is. So that gave me a, a knowledge of what's happening in the community and give me the contact with the, with the communities. That's, I think that I answered your question, okay?
Now, you started, do you want me to repeat it, or you? I said a lot.
I think I'm okay.
Sure.
I do. I'm, I'm connected through, in the community through the civic association in my development. Also, First State Educate. I'm not on any of their committees or anything, but I do attend a lot of their seminars. Wilmington University, I attend a lot of their free seminars as well. I am a graduate of Wilmington University, had my master's. And then, as far as school districts, I am a member of the parent group at Dun &amp; Bedford. For the last couple of years, I've been the book fair manager, I ran a book fair. And so we do a lot of things at, at Dun &amp; Bedford to help bring some money into the district. Other than that, that's probably it. I haven't coached in a while, so I can't say coaching is keeping me busy in the community.
I need some, to add something else.
Are we allowed to do that?
I mean, you had time, it's, it's something relevant to the decision, I don't see a problem.
And I'm founding member of First State Educate, and I need the board too.
Oh. All right, thank you, the board members. One thing I actually did want to discuss, that I wanna ask for both of you, I do want to ask one additional question. We have, and it's a question we kind of had on one of our possibles, but for each of you, if you could tell me, there, there's a lot of dedication that this takes and for you guys, both of you are very busy in your different, you know, activities that you're involved with in your careers. Do you feel you'll have the time to be able to attend not just the board meetings, but also other functions and everything else that a, a board member could be asked to participate in? I'll start with Mr. Carlos. No, was it, is it Tanya?
Um, yes, I do believe I will have plenty of time to attend. I'm retired, so a lot of what I do is basically things that I volunteer for. I do have a, a small business, but that does not keep me busy at all. So yes, I will be able to attend.
Thank you. Same question, you?
Yes, I do have the time because some of the, most of the boards that I belong, except for two, they meet every four months.
Well, the, the one thing I would say, no matter what, I think we're gonna be blessed. I thank you both for interviewing and putting your interest in this school district. And I, I will very much say out loud that I, I believe no matter who we choose, there's a lot of love and caring and it feels like you guys are in it for the right reason. So I thank you both for doing that and for everything you've already done to, for the district and the community. I'd like to ask the board for a second to maybe just take a moment, review your notes, and I'll ask for a motion in a moment, if anyone has one. But just kind of take a moment to reflect, if you need to, go over anything you need. All right. So we have two candidates, Tanya Kerns and Carlos DePries. With that being said, do I hear a motion on either of the candidates?
I move that we appoint Carlos DePries to the vacancy in District G on the Colonial School Board.
A second.
All right. No, you're fine. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right. That being said, I will do a roll call vote on that. As moved by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Ms. Breeding. We'll start with Mr. Handy.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna go yes. Ms. Breeding?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lawls?
No.
Dr. Dorsey?
Yes.
And? All right. I'll vote yes as well. And with a vote of five to one, that is the majority with that. So the motion passed. Mr. Carlos, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I will take a moment to also just say, Ms. Kerns, thank you for everything.
Thank you, thank you, very much.
Ms. Kerns has been volunteering for a long time on the Oversight Committee as well as everything else. So like I said, we're truly blessed with both you guys being involved. And I hope that you guys continue to be involved with that. But with that being said, we welcome you to the board. We'll be, Dr. Spencer?
We'll reach out, my secretary will reach out, we'll talk about how we're gonna look moving forward, starting in October, second Tuesday of the month. We'll do the swearing in prior to the next meeting, we'll arrange that. We're gonna wrap up this meeting and then we'll, we'll catch up.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, of course. All right. Oh, yeah, sorry. All right. With that, fondest motion of all, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All right. As moved by Mr. Lawls, do I have a second?
Second.
Can you give that one to Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Dr. Dorsey? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, nay. All right.